Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody this morning. And if we could, please let's rise and have a moment of reflection before we begin. Thank you. Do you want to give your? Ashley, for anybody that's joining in.
Thank you, and through you Mayor Eccles. Before I begin at any point, if you get disconnected, you can dial one six four seven five five eight zero five eight eight and enter the ID for this meeting, which is eight nine one five six two six two four eight zero. Both members of council and staff have been briefed on the various features of the Zoom meeting software and will be raising their hands physically to speak. For members of the public, if you require any technical assistance, please send a chat message to myself, Ashley Noble, Communications Coordinator, and I will attempt to assist you. It should be noted for members of the public that this meeting is taking place across two meeting platforms, both on Zoom as well as being live streamed on YouTube. Public participation, if any, must be done through Zoom and cannot be done through YouTube at this time.
Thank you, Ashley. I'm going to ask, is there any preliminary interest or declaration from any of the members? Seeing none, can be declared if it is rise at any time. We have a presentation this morning from our consultant, John Avicavus. That's as good as I'm gonna get. But we're having a little bit of technical difficulty. From what I understand, not on our end. I believe it is on John's end. So he will be joining us shortly, but I'm going to suggest that we recess until he connects in. So turn off your mics and talk freely amongst everybody.
Oh yeah, yes, yes. Director of Finance, you'd be in that formula based stuff. Let's get back to the meeting itself. And John, thank you for joining us today and getting over. I explained to the audience and council, there seemed to be some technical difficulties, but we've resolved those at this point in time. And as I said, welcome. So you have a presentation for us?
I do.
Let you get right at that.
Okay. So first off, I just want to say to the committee, I apologize for my lateness this morning. There is no good excuse for being late, especially when I have a group waiting for me. I can provide an excuse if you like. I figure it's, it won't be a good one in either event. So I just want-
I've already, I've already given you one. It was a technical problem.
Okay. I appreciate that. So I'm just gonna screen share then if that's okay, and just step to the comments. I'm presuming most of you've already have the comments.
Yes, they were in our package and whatnot, so we'll go through them.
And I guess either you can screen share on your end because it says I'm disabled from a screen sharing. So you can either enable icon share or, oh, there we go. Thank you. It's good to have help. So if we just go to the next slide. Okay, so as I talked about last time, generally speaking, when I start a search, I do like to hear from those that are hiring and also staff and other stakeholders as to what's their important. It helps kind of inform my recruitment and also inform candidates, make sure that they really know the opportunities at hand. So I'm going to say in this particular case, I got a great response. So to get a seven for seven of response from all of council, like I've done other searches. I just did one for another client. And to be honest, council is excited about hiring their CIO. They weren't all too excited about doing the survey. So I want to thank you for everyone's efforts to get that done. The questions I asked, I think we know what those are. First 90 days, one to three years, and then the focus on what kind of education experience you'd like. And then lastly, there were some other comments. The other comments that were put in there, I just put them in basically as they were written with a minor modification. I thought they were informative and it helps me a lot. So anyway, what I am going to do, when I finish each slide, pass this one here, I'm going to take a pause and I wouldn't mind comments from the committee because sometimes the comments are on target, other times they're not. And I want to make sure that what I'm speaking to candidates about and so forth is kind of reflective of the group thinking. So, but if we go to the next page, that would be great. Okay, so this slide is, well, I'm going to call it a paraphrasing of the 12 comments that I got. And I do like to put them in order to, in my mind, of kind of what's logical for new person starting. So I guess the first thing I heard about, obviously going to be getting a CIO that could potentially be new to the community. So they need to probably do more listening and learning than talking. And it's really learning about your community, you know, the history of the community, how you've evolved, what your sum of current priorities are, what makes your your community unique. You know, you're both rural, you've got a number of different, call it urban hubs, and obviously get to know the service clubs, the recreational organizations, and obviously the community itself, what the residents want, and obviously council priorities, which are reflective of residents' needs. And then most importantly, you can't do it on your own. So get to know the staff and specifically their capabilities. The other important thing is what I call building trust. So they do have to build trust with a lot of different people. And it starts with the council, your team, the people that work with you. There's obviously Conservation Authority. I know from the county, I did speak with Kim Ringgrove, she both did the survey and took the time to personally call me. So I know she's really looking forward to having a great relationship, whoever the new CEO is going to be, and obviously the province and the community leaders. Also important for new CIO is to establish credibility. So Laura herself was there for a long time. So obviously had credibility, a new person's kind of going to come on board. And I think that they need to establish credibility in a nice way that where they get to know the staff and everywhere in the community. You do have a strategic plan that kind of lays out the priorities of council. It was very clear that that plan is important. So someone needs to embrace the plan. And there's a number of action items in those priorities. So obviously read it thoroughly and start figuring out, or not figuring out, making sure those priorities continue to be met. Other things I did gather, new CIO is also an opportunity for fresh ideas. And not necessarily saying that you want a revolution, but I think that you'd, council would like ideas brought to the table. And if there's an opportunity to say, well, why are we doing something a certain way and we can do it better, then obviously you want to hear those ideas provided for consideration. And then obviously make sure the departments are working well, there's sufficiencies. And I guess one interesting comment came. I think this was, well, the last comment here, more delegated authority for staff. Because what I gather here is that you do have capable staff, they do want to do more, and they would appreciate opportunities basically to be able to do more for council, you know. And I find, when I do work with other clients, I guess that the one comment I hear from all staff, especially when they talk about their new leader, is empowerment. You know, so I figure council has an opportunity here, it's for them to consider. And that's, that's basically empowerment. Maybe that's the word I should use rather than delegated authority, but delegated source municipal term. Okay, so other things, planning growth and infrastructure. I understand that, well, the aging infrastructure, this is an issue facing every single municipality across Ontario. I'm doing a CIO search for Muskoka Lakes right now, and it's, it's public that they have aging infrastructure as well. They're doing a level of service review. And I think heading into this next year, they're likely going to have to make some tough decisions about their infrastructure. And what do they do? I think many of their call it arenas and fire stations, things like that, do need significant remediation. So I'm not saying that's the case here, but I do understand the infrastructure is aging. So obviously make sure there's a good handle on that. I also heard about comments about water and wastewater capacity. And once again, I'm going to say you're no different from any other communities. They want to grow, there's development pressures. But everyone's got a certain allocation that they have with their water wastewater. So what I heard is that you're no different in that regard, and that's an issue to be able to contend with. Other things, planning, I said, understand resource allocation, I think probably more directly is that your, your, a planning person has left the municipality. So obviously something needs to be done there. And then there's boundary discussions with Hanover. So obviously the CIO needs to get involved in that. And then the soggy airport, you know, there's discussion to be had on what to do, what are the pros and cons to keep it or to sell it. Other things, I put the priorities ahead of the people, but you really can't do it without the people, you know. So I thought for the CIO coming on board, kind of get to know what the priorities are, then really look to the capabilities to staff in context of the priorities that you have. So obviously, when I say SWOT analysis, that could be informal, just kind of understand the T but what their capabilities are, making sure everyone's in the right roles, and then obviously you're meeting the needs of both day to day and the strap plan. I did hear that some of the staff would, appreciation to staff is an important thing. I find sometimes we all forget about that. So committed, you do have committed staff and and appreciation, I think, is important. And then the other thing I heard that there have been staff that have left the municipality. And I don't think anyone's crystal clear as to why the some have left, you know, sometime it's better opportunity. I've heard that there has been some, I guess, mention about compensation, is the compensation effective across the board? And I guess that would kind of go back to when you've last done a comp survey. I know many of my municipal clients across the board are doing comp surveys and they kind of recognize they're not competitive. So I think it's important for the CIO to look at that and say, are you competitive? Are you not? And give council good information to consider. But it's not always about money. It could be other things too, you know, which are basically just empowerment, engagement, a great culture. So I think someone needs to review, do a review of that and just bring information to council. Other things, economic development, when I look at your strategic plan, it does focus a lot about economic development already. But I think you want the person to understand where you're at and continue to promote it. You have some capital projects underway, obviously the police station, get a handle on that. And then lastly, budget, obviously understand budget, both operating and capital, and also in the context of your assets. Last couple of things, I'm going to say community involvement communications. They're both basically very closely related. I think both are pretty important here. So you want someone who's going to be a community leader. I think that's going to tell me the candidates who want to commute in from a distance, probably not going to be top, top of mind for what you're looking for. So you do want someone to show a real interest in the community, to get involved. And there's a lot that, while I'm going to say things like the hospital is not necessarily a direct municipal concern, as the new CIO, you can certainly get involved in that. The physician recruitment piece, I would say that probably is kind of a direct thing that they should be involved. But really, it kind of stems that I heard, you want the person to be involved in your community. And then lastly, I'm going to say that this communications part, you are looking for great communications on all fronts with everyone. Particular comment of note, that I heard that you would probably like more public communication as to what council is doing and how the tax dollars are spent. And as a, as a rate payer, I think every rate payer's want to know how tax dollars are spent. So that's my short summary of what I heard for the first 90 days. Maybe I would like to turn it back to mayor and council here to see, have I, do I have any inaccuracy here with the comments? Or are there more things to add that I may have missed?
Council, anybody want to jump? I'll start. Just one thing, John, that I noticed you missed. Under current state, assessment and ideas, you got down to empower staff more, but you didn't, didn't comment on that less consultants. you didn't, uh, didn't comment on that less consultants. Was, uh, did you feel slightly, uh, you know, was that a conflict of interest to say that?
No, uh, uh, well, well, less consult reports, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't need a response, uh, that was a little.
Uh, I, 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 I get it, Dom, a little slow this morning. Oh. Yeah. He- here I am delivering a consultant report, right?
Yes, you are. But, yeah. Anyway, we do have a, I do have a question, uh, councillor Hutchinson, Doug?
Yeah, I, I believe, um, John, I mentioned that, um, under planning that we're, uh, in the process of looking for a planner, but I don't think we are. I think we've hired a new planner since, since then. So that's just an update, and maybe that was, uh, earlier information, but we do have a planner now on staff.
Uh, 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 I'm gonna say congratulations to you, like, uh, just, the hot, hot hiring planners is, uh, pretty tough nowadays. Okay.
Okay, anything? Oh, councillor Shay, Jeff?
Uh, yes, um, I'm concerned about the issue of, of employees feeling overworked and not appreciated. Um, I assume that the primary responsibility for, uh, employee satisfaction would rest with the C A O. And, um, I had the impression that our previous C A O was doing a reasonable job with that, uh, but now I'm, I'm concerned that maybe that aspect of the C A O's uh, responsibility needs to be more carefully attended to. Maybe, maybe, uh, council should be directing the C A O to be doing, uh, more regular, um, reviews, or maybe we just need to be a little bit more proactive in this arena, if, if this is a concern that, that is arising here. So that's, I, I don't know if this is directly related to the uh, hiring process. Uh, I mean, it's, it's important that we flag this for the incoming C A O, but, um, I do think that there might be sort of an action item here for us going forward as well. The other thing is, um, I noticed that you had at the top that, um, external stakeholders, uh, one response. I thought we had identified three external stakeholders uh, that we wanted to invite, uh, to get responses from. Did, did we invite, uh, response and not receive any, um, from the other two?
Uh, so, so my understanding that everyone who was, uh, supposed to be contacted was contacted and invited. And to be honest, okay, your participation rate, I'm gonna say is exemplary. I often do the surveys and it goes out to twenty, and I sometime get forty and fifty percent response to the point that I have to delay my presentation, send out another raft of emails. So to get a hundred percent response, that's pretty precedent setting. Your, your response rate was great. Uh, now, what I can do with those two stakeholders that basically, uh, didn't respond, uh, I can actually, uh, make it a point to call them and, and just to get their comment.
Uh, well, I think staff have indicated that, uh, they were invited to respond and, and weren't able to. So I think the opportunity has been presented. I don't know if we have to go further, just, just curious, look at, so thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make one comment. Your staff is very efficient. And I, I particularly wanna praise your clerk who is beyond efficient. I'm, I'm gonna score him a hundred and twenty percent.
Geez, that's too bad, Jamie, that's not eligible for your job performance appraisal. That was common.
Listen, listen, he, he keeps me in line with my, with, uh, what needs to be done for council by when, so I'm gonna say thank you, Jamie.
And thank you for pointing that out because, uh, yeah, the expectations, uh, have always been met, and I'm gonna re- reiterate your comments as well too, yes. Uh, I think we do understand that we do have a, a very dedicated and, and high performing, uh, staff and yeah, sometimes we don't say that enough, so yeah, and, and, and thank you for putting that out there.
Yeah, a- and on that note, all of your staff have been a pleasure to work with. I just had a particular interaction with Jamie with the, with the document that wasn't prepared, uh, on, on time, so that's, uh, so, anyway.
Sometimes Jamie and I have a bit of a problem, but he always wins, uh, when it comes to procedural activities.
Well, I, I, I've, I've learned, I've learned the procedure now, so I'm crystal clear in the future.
Very good. Okay.
Okay.
No other questions from council on that page?
Yeah.
Then I maybe suggest we go on to the next one.
Yeah, yeah, great. Uh, so when we go to the next one here, this is kind of a continuation of the first slide, but, uh, I, before I proceed there, I, I, I have made note of the planner. And I've also made note about, uh, uh, the C A O really needs to be proactive with the staff, uh, when they start, uh, not only when they start, but just all the time, so. So anyway, um, when we look at this particular slide now, the relationships and trust, the first ninety days you're building, I would say basically, uh, uh, eh, one to three years later, or even not even one to three years, you really have to have those solid relationships. So this line is the same, but rather than, uh, there's one word difference, rather than building, it is now, uh, I'm using the term built and I underlined it. Other things that, uh, uh, you know, obviously the business plan priorities, you've got it laid out, uh, I'm gonna say, uh, uh, it, it's almost to the point, it's, it's, you know what needs to get done. Obviously, there's to be other things, but I think, uh, uh, council is really looking for, uh, achievement of those business priorities. You also have a West Gray action plan, uh, I think that deals with environment and climate change. So obviously that seems to be important, so that needs to be followed and, and, uh, uh, in, in a thoughtful fashion. Uh, you do want the C A O to be a trusted advisor, that's really important in terms of building that trust. Uh, you are looking to them for knowledge and information, uh, both formally and informally. Um, and then once again, I kind of carried over the delegated authority for, uh, for staff. So what, what, i- i- it's almost, I was gonna say catch twenty-two, okay? Because one of the comments I heard is that they're overworked, and then the other one is that they want more delegated authority. So I think, I think a discussion needs to be had there as to what this balance is gonna look like, you know, so. I s- uh, sometime I say, don't ask for what you ne- don't necessarily want, but anyway, it came up, I really thought it's worth mentioning, so. And then obviously, I guess, uh, uh, council does wanna make sure their priorities are getting done. Uh, so there should be some measurement process in place to be able to report back to both council and community of those priorities. Once again, the people side, uh, carry on from basically the first slide, but, uh, really what you're looking for is to have a, uh, a happy group of people, empowered, engaged, collaborative. Uh, I put a lot of nice words in there, but really that's what I was hearing from, uh, uh, from the comments. This is what everyone's looking for, uh, I guess the kind of environment and culture you wanna have. Uh, I do not know when the last comp review was done, and most municipalities now, I guess, uh, if they haven't done one within the last three years or so, uh, they are actually doing, uh, comp reviews and uh, I know nobody wants to think of paying more, but it is important to stay competitive. And at least to say you've done it and, uh, you're, uh, paying fair and reasonable versus, uh, the, the rest. And, uh, I guess on the notion of comp review as well, uh, I will provide for council as we're going through the process, uh, data from the twenty twenty-three salary disclosure of what the C A Os are earning in the general area, just for your consideration. I, I think I will definitely do it for this county, but then I'm gonna take the surrounding counties as well, uh, just to give you an idea, a, an appreciation of what others are earning. But that, that data also will be one year out of date, so, uh, but, so take it for what you may, you may find it informational. Next topic is economic development. I think that's in your strategic plan. It was in the first ninety days. I really think that everyone's looking to make sure that, uh, the municipality is, uh, is really doing what they can, uh, from, uh, a social and economic development perspective. Obviously, everyone wants new business. There's the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and there's funding opportunities, so be as involved in there as you can. Uh, uh, doctor recruitment, I put that under economic development because people coming to the community do wanna know that there's, uh, uh, physicians available. And that obviously that, uh, climate action initiatives, uh, that is important to you. So I think, uh, that's, uh, in my mind, part of how you would, uh, market yourself as a community from an economic development viewpoint. Getting down to the, uh, call it the, 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 the growth in the infrastructure, so, uh, I, I'm not quite clear on where you're at with your asset management strategy and plans, uh, but uh, I did hear a couple of comments about aging infrastructure and, and, uh, that one needs to consider that. So I guess this notion of condition report, that's probably my, my term rather than a stakeholder's term, but when I hear the, the comment saying we have aging infrastructure and everyone needs to have a good handle on sort of the cost of sort of maintaining that aging infrastructure, you know, from my point of view means that you need to have a good ca- uh, asset management plan. And if you don't have a condition report for all of them, well, you should have one, so. And then with that asset management and condition report in hand, uh, one may wanna do a capital service level review, just to make sure that your, uh, your assets are, are well maintained and, and obviously determine costs. And, and like I said, I'm doing work for, uh, uh, Muskoka Lakes and, uh, this is a front and center for council. They have a huge study going on with all of their assets and, and they know from them that'll obviously, uh, what they do will be quite important because, uh, if, when one makes changes, uh, communities don't always embrace the changes. So it's, it's thoughtfulness is really required. And then obviously, I guess, when it comes to, uh, uh, servicing capacity in stormwater, uh, you know, that's pretty important to growth. Uh, so I think, uh, a, a good plan needs to be in place for that. And then there are other things in terms of, uh, comments about, uh, uh, options for landfill and garbage collection. And then, uh, there was the, uh, called, uh, I, I kind of summarized where we talked about the Hanover boundary discussions, you know, that whatever those discussions are going on, that there's a resolution for them. Uh, the police station that's under construction, uh, expectation that, that it's built. And then from a finance and budget viewpoint, uh, pretty simple expectation, it's well managed, both operating in capital, uh, your infrastructure, you've got a great plan in place, and, uh, if there are grant opportunities, that you take advantage of all of them. Um, and the last couple of things, obviously, good customer service to your constituents is very important. I put that under service excellence. Uh, and then likely there'll be multiple projects and initiatives, so obviously balance those priorities and needs. And then, uh, obviously, relationships and communication space can go hand in hand. Uh, so great relationships with your neighbors, uh, and also with the county. And, and once again, like I say, uh, Kim Wingrove was the one who called me personally just to, uh, uh, make it clear she wants to have a relationship with the community here, and she wants to be a partner, uh, so she's looking for collaboration with whoever the new C A O is. And then, uh, last comment, obviously, uh, you want this person to be a good administrative leader for the town, a- and this good administrative face. Uh, but, uh, you also want them to be seen as part of the community and be genuine in terms of wanting to be involved. Um, and then lastly, just, uh, great communication skills with everyone. So that is my summary on the stakeholder comments, and I will just do a short pause to see if there's any other, uh, follow-up from, from mayor and council.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, councillor Hutchinson, Doug?
Just, just a couple of things, John. The one under planning growth and infrastructure, um, I, I don't want it to be misleading, but you, you state pressure boundaries, uh, have been resolved. We have pressures from not only the Hanover area, but Mount Forest and Markdale, which is north and south. Um, so we're in, there are pressures there that is ongoing, so I just don't want to mislead um, our new C A O coming in that we've resolved their pressures. There, there are lots of pressures, uh, in terms of development on our boundaries. So I think that's important to clarify. And the other question, uh, comment was about the asset management plan and maybe our, our temporaries, um, potential future C A O could, uh, talk about, um, the asset management plan, where we are right now, because we're in the process and I'm hoping that uh, we'll be able to clo- close that up soon. So maybe can you bring an update on Kerry on that?
Just to be clear, our acting C A O.
Um, yeah, just a quick update, um, we're continuing to do work on, uh, we have it up, uh, the last deadline was for core assets, roads, bridges, water, sewer. And for the July first deadline of this year, we need to, uh, add in all the non-core assets. So that's everything else, the fire, the buildings, um, all of, all of the other assets that we have. Um, so we're in the process of, uh, putting those into, into the plan, so that, um, and that is a target that we need to meet by July first of this year to have those non, non-core assets included.
And, John, I, I'm gonna, my interpretation of, back to you, Doug, on the pressures of the boundaries, be, you know, have been resolved or I guess what I'm reading into it is that, uh, the C E O will come in and in this one to three years will start getting resolved. You know, from the comments, we've been talking about it for a number of years. But I think that, you know, we're looking for somebody to get us to, um, resolve, uh, or a, a solution on those. And yes, you're correct, Hanover's not the only one. Certainly, uh, there's those other, other two urban centers that are surrounded again by West Grays. Not necessarily in, but we take up quite a bit of the boundary around them.
Yeah, w- w- when I, when I heard the comment, I only heard one comment about, uh, Hanover, so I actually appreciate, uh, your, uh, uh, notation about Mo- Mount Forest and Markdale. Uh, I also appreciate sort of the quick update as to where the asset management plan is at, uh, and, and Harry, if there's any documents that, uh, are available in the form of, let's say, a council report as we're doing the search as to where progress is, that would be great. Uh, that way I could make sure that the new person coming in for interviews, uh, uh, is up to date. So.
Perfect, I'll get you those as, uh, I can share those along with.
Yeah, i- i- it's, it sounds like it's well in hand and it's being managed effectively, but that's what I'm, I'm getting.
Yes, I think you picked up that correctly.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on the one to three-year vision? Okay?
Yeah.
Well, we'll move on to the next slide then, John?
Yeah, i- i- if, if I could just have, uh, we're on the next slide, but if, uh, we can stay there. I just had one clarification about the boundary discussions, that, okay? Are, are, are these just discussions where other municipalities wanna expand? Or because I, I'll give an example, like, I, I, I did, I'm doing work with Central Elgin at the moment. And in their case, uh, uh, a new battery plant's going in. It actually went into what used to be former Central Elgin land. And that land got annexed by the province and just simply given to Saint Thomas. So are, are your discussions, just call it friendly discussions where they, they, they what, what, what kind of discussions are they? That's, that's my only clarification, it would be, uh, useful to hear.
Huh, everybody's gone quiet all of a sudden on that.
Listen, uh, uh,
I would think, uh, from my perspective, and I think from council, we are in some formal discussions with the town of Hanover, uh, on whether it's a service delivery, uh, you know, infrastructure, service delivery review, um, on how to service lands that are in West Gray that, uh, Hanover has. From their understanding, they have, uh, land issues, uh, they don't have enough for what they see as their growth. So trying to master that with Hanover. The other two, um, are probably, uh, more towards just, uh, um, service delivery. And, uh, how lands that are possibly in West Gray, we can, uh, do that, that's certainly with Markdale. And somewhat similar around industrial, commercial lands, uh, in Mount Forest area as well too, in the south, uh, south area. To get into those discussions on some of those lands that are there and try to understand what services are required and and how we can continue to develop those lands.
Yeah, okay. I I I think that's an ongoing discussion that many municipalities have. I did a C A O search for Rockville number of years ago. And uh Rockville wanted to expand. They were surrounded by Elizabeth Town Kitley that have lots of rural farmland. Obviously, they want more land, uh Elizabeth Town Kitley uh didn't want to have those discussions, but then it came down to a. Uh their residents are using facility, so facilities in Rockville, so they're 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 pretty usually involved discussions, so. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Very well.
Okay, so when it comes to the kind of experience you're looking for, i- I I I find this exercise interesting because when I do this. Every stakeholder has one or two things that are important for them. The one or two things that they mentioned are important. Uh helps kind of build the profile and so I'll just kind of quickly go go through things. But like each person almost said, one of these things is important. And then when you add them all up on a page, you 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 really do end up with a pretty robust profile. That typically matches what's in the job description, which I'm going to say is the case here, you know, so. Education, uh I gathered it wasn't to be all and end all, but you are looking for someone who has appropriate education to the role. So what appropriate is uh to be determined, usually going to have a degree from university. And then uh often you have some forms of municipal uh uh certification. From a business leadership point, uh I think you are looking for a progressive leader. Uh ideally, someone who's been there before, and if they haven't been there before as the C A O, they have ability to step in. Um and I think also you want someone, I guess, who will understand the needs of your community. So let's say if I'm getting someone out of a out of the city, uh well, there's going to have to be some connection to. Uh uh rural community settings, uh sort of the 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 uh call it, uh i- i-. It has to be connection to these uh communities such as yours. I I have a urban rural, but what I'm talking about urban, I'm talking about really. Uh smaller urban type communities. From a, call it a strategic and critical thinking viewpoint, obviously want them to be uh. Uh capable to understand strategy, uh when I use the term operational acumen, means turn strategy into tactics. Uh and then be able to make good decisions, uh be that trusted advisor. And uh every council wants the same thing, that they want complexity uh delivered to them. And uh uh a fashion that's easy to understand for decision-making purposes, so. From a relationship viewpoint and collaboration, uh good political acuity, uh so when you're saying things, you should uh. Understand the implications behind your words, good at governance. Uh good at engaging with all these different stakeholders they have to work with. If there's conflicts, you want them to be able to uh resolve them. And then obviously be a good advocate to the uh uh different levels of government. People point of view, you want them to be a uh great with your staff and and create this uh uh. A culture of that staff enjoy working in. Economic development technically falls under municipal operations. Uh I set it out on its own just because uh the term economic development seemed to be prevalent uh through all of the comments I got. So I did put down economic development on its own, but it should be economic development in the context with the uh. In the context of a community such as yours. Uh from a municipal operations viewpoint, I think you'd like them to understand as much as possible across all things. If I had to pick a focus here, it'd probably be good understanding of call it the planning, the community development. Uh that also the im- the implication of uh infrastructure and understanding issues around water and wastewater, so. Not that you wouldn't consider them without that experience, but that seemed to be the emphasis. Uh that obviously uh innovation, change management, running projects, everyone wants that. Uh good skills with finance and grants, uh clearly another important attribute. They need to understand customer service, they need to be able to get legislation. And then lastly, I guess uh uh good engagement with community, uh good communication skills. And then the other attributes were just the points made during my uh uh stakeholder survey, so I just put them down as is. So. Have I missed anything in terms of experience profile?
Anyone? No, I think you've. By the silence on this end, I guess you have captured it all.
Listen, i- 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 this this one here, it's almost like honestly, from client to client that I work with. We always tend to land on the same thing with every single client. I I go through the exercise, but uh so, yeah. E- every client wants the same thing, they want as much as they can across all of these uh uh call it uh. Compensation requirements, so. Okay, so if we go to our last slide here. Now, the last slide here is not necessarily me paraphrasing, okay? Uh these are just comments that basically came from the various stakeholders and obviously I'm not attributing where the comment came from, but just a. Uh a a few things that were said, you know. So first one, do you want a community focused leader with a good track record, uh great comms, collaborative, uh. Great with staff and and, you know, good service, excellence, accountability, responsible growth. That's a pretty all encompassing statement. I think it's already been reflected in the other uh comments we've gone through. Uh obviously, uh I'm going to say passion, pretty important, you know, uh everyone wants that, I think, staff and council, you know, so. And then obviously another comment, you know, that uh you're looking for the the candidate to meet all the criteria. Uh I think that's great. Whenever I started a search, you always set the bar as uh uh high. Uh I I do encourage committees to uh not always look for just straight experience. I think there's something to be said for people with ability and enthusiasm. And uh I I I think the other searches I've done, uh when I did my search for Wellington North. They hired a enthusiastic young lady, I think she came from a city of Kitchener. She had a very strong background in terms of planning and community development. She was ready to for the next step in her career. So that council judged her one of her experience, but secondly, where there was a gap in experience, they all thought she had great ability. And to my understanding, she's worked on quite well. So and then obviously, we've already talked about this uh uh personable and approachable. That's what I'm going to be looking for and that's what I heard, and then uh uh I think here's a. Uh but uh I'm going to say a nice comment about Laura, so. Uh yeah, and I I agree, I I do know Laura and I do think she's very personable, so. From a people and culture viewpoint, I think everyone wants to make sure that everyone's in the uh the right roles and are properly supported. Um and then another comment about the staff that uh it was quite clear also from the comments that uh there is uh. Uh that this is not a staff comment here about the great team of dedicated professionals. I'm going to say this is the council for the. The staff that are on this call, uh this is what the council thinks of you, uh that uh there is a great team of dedicated professionals, so. And and obviously, they want to hire a C A C A O, that it's going to recognize the needs of staff. And to be able to work well with them, and uh that's what I look for as well. On the other side, uh the C A O really needs to be able to work well with council. Uh there was a comment about keep council focused on strategic rather than operational priorities. I have a comment on that. Whenever I do searches and I find, whether it's a hospital C E O or a municipal C E O or something other. And often uh I hear s- s- uh the C-level executive complaining that. The border council's getting involved in operations, so I always take it back to who this, who the leader is. And a leader who basically has the trust of council, generally speaking, does not have. People getting involved in operations, and I know for me, if I was a council member or a a board member. If I didn't have faith in the leader, I'd be right into operations, so I'm going to say that uh this is a. Uh up to the leader to demonstrate their capabilities, so council can do what they really need to do. Is focus on the strategic things and hearing the needs of their constituents, so. And I think uh with that, e- everyone does have a role to play. You know, council staff, you're you're working here together as a team, um and. Council wants good recommendations so you can make good decisions, you know. And then uh the working relationship is all already, I think, positive, so obviously they need to continue creating that, you know. Uh the last comment was more a note for the recruiter, make sure that uh uh we're doing our our work. Uh and I'm going to comment on that, uh understood, and we do do a high level of diligence before we hire candidates. And uh I think I talked about that before with the reference checking process and so forth, that uh uh we do look for. Uh understanding past performance in each of the last uh roles from candidates, so. That's uh the end of my presentation and summary, but any any additional comments to share?
That was the time.
Yeah, thank you, John. Um so my my concern is that um. We may have to up our clothing allowance in the next budget for the Superman or Superwoman outfits that this person is going to need. But uh realistically, I I do feel that it's uh it needs to be a special person and we need to set the bar high, so. I think the bar is pretty high in this case, so hopefully, hopefully we're successful.
Listen, uh 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 I think if you don't set the bar high to start, uh it would not be the right way to approach the search.
Thank you, uh Mayor Eccles. So based on what I would have read here, is there like a kind of a scoring system for the applicants? Because obviously there's a common theme of some, some of these comments are higher on the bar than the other ones. Is that kind of how we would arrive at some of these, like high to low priorities? When we're when we're conducting or getting to a short rest?
I I don't know if I necessarily have a scoring system for each applicant, okay? Uh when we present the interview guides, you will have a scoring system for candidates for how they answer the questions, but. Generally speaking, my scoring system is a uh. Uh I I like to simplify things, so what I heard from all these comments is you're looking for. A leader with uh experience or abilities, but you're looking for, call it the top echelon, as good as you can get. So when I present my candidates, I do have my A-list, my B-list and my my C-list. Usually the ones in the A-list meet most of the attributes that you're looking for. Uh the Bs are also worth considering, but there's usually a a caveat, usually it's a caveat that uh. They're not proven in all categories, so and and in many cases, candidates from my B-list get hired because uh. Uh the councils and committees are looking for candidates who have potential to step up and grow, so. But uh there 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 will be a pretty easy way to evaluate candidates when you get to that process, like he uh like. I I I I don't like having confusing processes and I. I do share uh rightly or wrongly my opinions on candidates based on information I've collected. Uh and then you as a group decide who you want to move forth with. Yeah, it it won't, it won't be complicated when we get to that stage, trust me. Now, now, I I guess that said, I I did work with one council and uh. One of the council members have happened to be a teacher and she had a master's in education, so. Uh she wanted a scoring rubric on candidates as we go forth, you know, so. That was her way of of analyzing and evaluating, and I find when I work with council, so one person wants a rubric. Another person says, I just want to meet the person and talk to them, so. What I try to do is make sure that we're encompassing everyone's needs, so if someone needed a scoring system to help them. Uh in their evaluation, we can have a a a scoring system we use, but I'm saying at the end of the day. How we achieve consensus on the best fit candidate is we kind of go through the process. And it it's almost like a gating process that you go through, like each stage of the process you uh evaluate. And at the end of the day, uh how we're going to decide is no different than a council meeting. You share your thoughts. And then essentially you vote. And then if you're split, for whatever reason, the ones that don't get the uh the candidate that that. Uh if you're split, then the question becomes the ones that didn't support the candidate, can they live with the candidate for term of council? And will they support them in their duties? But i- it won't be complicated, it's uh I've 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 gone through this a few times.
It certainly won't be. We come down to a split, I'll pull a coin out and we'll flip. Councillor Shea, Jeff.
Uh thank you. Did did you say at the beginning of the presentation that you were going to uh prepare a um. Uh salary comparison for um C A Os in neighboring municipalities?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to get uh from, uh it'll be from from a salary disclosure, okay? So what I'm going to collect for you is basically all of the C A Os, including the county C E O compensation in your county. And then I'm going to take all of the counties that are sort of surrounding your county as well. So you'll probably have about forty, fifty people on that list, and you'll be able to see what the other C A Os are earning in different municipalities. So. Yeah, it it's just useful, you know, because I find when I recruit, you know. Uh it's kind of hard to for you to make a decision. Let's say I present a candidate who's earning a couple of dollars more than your range. You know, I I I wouldn't expect you to compromise your range without data, so for me, anything you do has to be supported by data. So the answer is yes, you will have one. Uh I'll aim to have that for you uh uh while in advance of our shortlist. I'll 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 send that across next week.
Very good, okay, anything else? I guess one question, um we already have it, uh you have. The notice out and the advertising.
Yep.
Is out in the M C T O. Vast Media World.
Yeah.
Is out there, just, I think that was for council, I don't know whether anybody saw it, but yeah. John has already. Got the uh open invitation, I guess, for anybody to apply. Okay, anything else you need today, John?
No, no, I I I I'm actually good. I really appreciate everyone's comments.
Excellent, okay. Well, I guess so. That's it for this. We know what the criteria we have and whatnot, and we'll look forward to you having that. Uh shortlist to us and being able to stay on time and uh hopefully have a C E O. A job offered to a C E O by first week of June, give or take.
Yeah, yeah, it every everything remains on target so far. Uh and and if anyone has questions as we're going along about anything, uh ob- obviously, I'm I'm always available to answer questions, so.
Well, very good.
Okay.
Thank you for being so open and uh that's great to hear and happy searching for for us all.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John.